And I'll rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, our nation under God.
All right, we need a motion to approve the agenda.
Moved.
We have a motion and second, any discussion? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. Huh? Oh, okay. Alex, I'm sorry. I totally forgot I was supposed to look at you before I started, I'm sorry. Any motion to approve the contract with superintendent search firm Missouri School Boards Association?
Moved.
All right, I have a motion and second, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, that passes. All right, next is the main reason why we're here, so we'd like to welcome Dr. Brent Underwood, who is the consultant for the Missouri School Boards Association. And he is going to talk to us tonight about the process of finding our next superintendent. So, we welcome you tonight and thank you for coming.
Thank you, Laura Lee, and good evening, everyone. Thanks for being so flexible with your time. I know the Tuesday of Thanksgiving week might not be your first option for another meeting. Yet, when I started looking at the calendar and doing some of the math and after visiting with Dr. Canos, thought maybe if we could jumpstart the process a little bit by getting in and meeting tonight, make some decisions, I think, that you'll find help drive the timing of the search as well, then I would feel better about calling in our help there in Columbia office tomorrow, when they're supposed to be closed. But they agreed they would stay open for tomorrow, just for you all. As a member district, they're happy to do that. So let me bring some greetings on behalf of Missouri School Board Association. Mike Purnell and the crowd over there are very excited about the opportunity to help facilitate the search for Rockwood. I have to admit that there's a little personal flair for this one, since I'm an alum of the district and was just talking with Dr. Kinder about my parents, who still reside in the same house that we moved to when I was 12, in your district. They're getting ready to relocate, but they're staying in the district, so I think we can still bug them, as far as taxes.
Are they still off yet, or are they?
That would be Marquette now, yeah. So, we have in front of you a lot of material. Want to make sure that we're on the same page, as far as some of the items and artifacts that we have there. In addition to your agenda that you just approved, there should be a one-page little outline of things that are really goals for me, as you are no doubt aware. Former superintendents tend to drag on with conversation. This is as much as anything to keep me on track, and not go down any rabbit holes that we don't need to. But those four or five items on that one page, I'd like to think that we could get through most of that this evening, and then place, of course, then set in place our process to find your next superintendent schools. You know, I better take just a second to acknowledge, you know, my assessment and perceptions of your outgoing superintendent schools. It's been a fun run to watch Dr. Canos serve at the head of a school system that has meant a lot to my family. And, you know, while this news might have caught a few off-guard, including myself, I am excited to help be a part of the process that will help you find best fit going forward. This is, without a doubt, the most important decision that this board will make, probably during your time that you serve as a board member. We do a good job at this, you won't be doing it again anytime soon. So, that would be, of course, one of my ultimate goals. My other commitment and promise to you is that, as facilitator for the search, that once we get closer to the end game, that we'll put in front of you folks that I 100% believe could be successful in that position. I will not bring anybody forward, I will not recommend anyone to you that you consider that I don't 100% believe can be successful in that position. Now, I'll tell you that I like to think of myself as being, still having some relevancy with regard to understanding what that position is about, but that window's starting to close a little bit. I have now been out of the game for 10 years. This is my 10th year of retirement, and have been doing these searches for that amount of time. I started the year after I retired as the superintendent of schools in Webster-Groves. The MSBA called me and asked me if I wouldn't be interested in working with school boards, and I said, "Well, quite honestly, I'm retiring because of a school board." See, that joke's a lot funnier if there are board members who are with me on that. That's not really true. I mean, it was partly true, I gotta be honest. But, yeah, I've really, you know, I thought at the time, "I don't know, is that gonna be something that I'll like doing?" And it turns out, I really do. I really do like it. I've enjoyed understanding that it's one way for me to be able to give back to a profession that was so good to me and my family. It's another way for me to kind of stay engaged with former colleagues and a lot of the connections that we make in this business, especially in this metro region, it's so small. When you're in the education profession, you seem to know everybody or have worked with everybody at some point in time. And, so I enjoy that aspect of it. For the most part, boards do need some help, kind of walking through that process. Most all of you are full-time, otherwise engaged, and of course, the money that you make as school board members is, you know, astronomical and can't be expected to do too much additional work. But helping you kind of walk through and understand the process, what we're looking for, listening. I like to think that the track record that I've been able to facilitate over those 10 years, the placement record, with almost exception, this will be the 28th search, I believe, that I will have started and facilitated. And with only exception, I have to come up with a new category for Dr. Whipke. Now, he's messing up my story, because he's not retiring, he's changing jobs, he's going to another location. But without exception, all the other folks that we helped place, 24, 23, are still in those positions, or have, on some occasions, four or five, retired. So, we've got a nice, strong batting average, we don't want to mess that up. We like to think, I like to think, that one of the reasons that we've been so successful with that placement rate is that we spend a lot of time, I spend a lot of time, with the board, understanding what it is that you're looking for, what do you think, your assessments and read of your stakeholders is, in terms of expectations for the superintendency, and then spend a lot of time in this kind of profile phase of talking with your stakeholders, your administrators, your teachers, your parents, your community, support staff, teaching staff, students, having them tell me, in sometimes old-school, low-tech ways, standing in front of a group and writing on a chart paper, what it is you think we need in our next superintendent schools. And everybody has a pretty good feel for that, and usually pretty anxious to share that with us. And, over time, you know, you look for different themes that come up in each of those groups, and I think we get a pretty clear picture of what that should look like, and what we are looking for in our next superintendent. So that gives me a lot of listen for's when I'm out interviewing and screening and site visits and vetting candidates on your behalf. I know what your community is telling us we need to be looking for and listening for. So that helps, and probably is the key reason why I think we've been able to have such a nice record. So let me back up and not get too far ahead of myself. So, I've already brought greetings and want to thank Janet and Kathy, who've already, on your behalf, been out there working to help organize. You know, first thing is congratulations, and the next thing is try to get a meeting together that's not on the calendar. So that may be the most difficult thing we'll do the whole time in the process. So thank you for being here and getting that done. Just a little bit about what's going on in terms of other searches. I think you're familiar that the first few months of this school year, I facilitated three separate searches in Hillsborough, in Valley Park, and in Ladue. All three of those positions have now been closed and filled successfully. In each case, about a three-month to four-and-a-half-month process. Ladue wanted to have a little more community engagement. They had a longstanding superintendent schools as retiring, and people were a little anxious about what that was gonna look and sound like, without Donna being in the helm. And, so one of the things that we'll do tonight, I think, is begin that process also, of understanding just, you know, kind of a backwards design, in terms of your thinking about how long we should extend the search, what we should be looking for, how many folks we're gonna engage in that process, and allow to have voice in that process. I also then was engaged to conduct the Fox search about 10 days ago, so we've just really begun their process. Their posting went out last week. I facilitated a focus group with their administrative group this week, and we'll be doing a few more next week. And so, in terms of the window and the timing, I think, we're at a great place, in terms of getting right in there. Couple people have already asked, you know, "Has your phone started ringing?" Yes. Emails are popping and messages are flying. Sometimes it's, "Well, I have a friend, you know, who would like to know." So, you know, we have some of those dynamics at play here, whenever we're looking and talking to folks who are sitting superintendents as well. So that really kind of gets us to number two on my agenda, which I think is the majority of the time that we want to spend together collaborating over what these decisions should look like. If possible, there's a second form there at your place, and kudos to Janet, who's already gone out and researched and, with the help of some folks here, I think, in the office, was able to fill in some of the top half of this form. With your permission, I asked Janet to go ahead and type her name in there as the district contact person, because she's already been doing exactly what that amounts to and what that requires, which is visiting with me, emailing, phone calling, back and forth with the office in Columbia, with Sherri Dyke, who is our clerical assistant, administrative assistant there in Columbia, at the MSBA office. And so, with your permission, going forward, I would see Janet playing a critical role in that connection and being a part of most all of our meetings that we have. Whether it be a predetermined work session that's aligned to some of your regularly scheduled meetings, or if it's a separate work session and/or closed session that we need to have to discuss the candidate pool, I would anticipate Janet being a part of that, unless for some reason you feel that that's not appropriate, or whatever. She'll help me stay organized, as I'm sure she does for you all as well, but also make sure that, you know, we have all the calendars in check and in play. So then, those district statistics is the next part of the form there. She went ahead and filled those in, so that we have that. Our goal is to complete the rest of this form tonight. Janet's gonna send that off to Sherri this evening or tomorrow morning. Sherri's gonna come into the office. We're gonna make sure that that goes live, as a posting, to all the websites and reciprocal outlets across the continent of the United States. That's about 956-some-odd places, with HR placement offices and website postings and Edweek and all those kinds of different places that will receive that, so that you can be assured that by the end of the week, folks will know that we have an opening, and if they're interested, they'll start going through our materials and looking at some of this at a glance. And this will be their first, probably, exposure to, if they're not familiar with the district, some of the things that are paramount, in terms of someone deciding whether he or she is gonna be interested in this position. Which brings us to that next heading of position information, and here's where we need to spend most of our time. You can see that there are three or four different headings here: salary, experience, education, multiple-year contract. We'll talk about all these in just a second, and then the search timeline. So, I like to think, and I've made some suggestions here, as we walk through number two on my agenda, and these are just suggestions, you notice that word is in bold there for you. But kind of a backwards design, if we looked at maybe a February hire, and I just picked that date because I believe that's one of your regularly scheduled meetings already, we obviously can flex that up, move it up, or move it back as necessary, but it gives us a guidance, kind of a North Star that we're shooting at. And if we need to extend that, we're not married to that date, but that's, I think, a pretty realistic date, to have that process wrapped up, concluded, and, you know, contract in place and in hand. Does that fit with where you guys are, in terms of some of your timing? I don't know how much conversation you've been able to have prior to this.
I have a few going around. One was announcing in the middle of March, and that's one of the reasons why we decided to get the ball rolling a little quicker, because we thought if we could get...
March would probably put you a little behind, a couple of the other searches that we know are likely to undergo. The other one that I didn't mention earlier, I did mention Fox. Special School District is getting ready to start their process the week after this, and will likely have a comparable kind of timeline, although I don't know that. I just have had some phone conversations with their board president.
November 14th, we updated that to February 13th.
Oh, on the other one? On your timeline that was revised? Yeah, I... Okay. Yep. It didn't have today's, and so I wasn't really sure, looking forward, but yeah, that's great. Okay. So we're good there? If we kind of play with that as an end game? Welcome, Jamie. Sorry, didn't mean to ignore you. No, no. So, if we use that as our back date, then you can see some of the other suggestions I'm making here. Knowing that tomorrow we can get this live, and the posting will be out and available, so I put down, you know, the 21st. With an application deadline, I wrote on my agenda the 21st, but I'd like to amend that to the 20th, maybe, because that also bumps right up against winter break, and those offices in MSBA will be closed on the 21st. She reminded me that she didn't want to come to work that day. That gives you right at four weeks, not a full four weeks, because we have, you know, Thanksgiving and a few other days in there, but that, I think, is certainly appropriate. Historically, most all the searches that I've facilitated, our posting is three to four weeks. In this case, the word is on the street, people already know that the opening's out there. It's kind of a high-profile position, obviously, and so anyone who's interested is already probably talking about it. If they haven't heard about it yet, they will have in the next week or so, and then that certainly gives them enough time to pull together. There is a lot of work involved in applying for the superintendency, once you see all the materials that we'll collect, reference letters and applications and background checks and all of that material. If you haven't been actively looking, then you've got to start that process, and so that means you've got to go out and contact a lot of people. Takes a little bit of time to pull that together. So my suggestion was, we make that the 20th, in terms of the application deadline. And of course, between and during those three or four weeks, I'm busy already beginning a lot of the screening and vetting, because people have already begun to contact me, they're submitting their applications early. If, you know, if it's someone that I feel like, someone that we're trying to take a look at, and I may or may not be familiar with them, I may or may not have had them in a previous search, as a former colleague, not familiar with their body of work, then I'm probably gonna, on your behalf, start doing some regional screening and interviewing, going out and having people... If they're from outside Missouri, I usually try to find a midway point where we can meet in Starbucks, or wherever, Panera, and do some initial screening and reviewing. And then, try to, you know, by the end of that deadline, know if we get some late submittals, you know, maybe on the day of the deadline for a submittal, then there might be a few names that I need to go out and find, you know, right after that. We're bumping right up into winter break, so I fully expect to take advantage of that. That's a good time for me to do screening, and it's a good time for them to not have to be away from work. They may be missing some time from family, but that's part of the gig when you're applying for a job. So that actually kind of helps us, I think, with moving into that winter break there. So, as far as that category down there, where it says "search timeline," if we're good with the 21st, or, you know, the February date for employee buy, the screening dates, I'll probably just put in something like, you know, listing December and early January, with obviously the contract to begin on the 1st of July, next 19. So that really is all we need for that, those boxes down there. Let's back up and talk about the three in the middle there, as far as the position itself. We had a phone call the other night with Laura Lee and Lynn, after the board had kind of extended that offer for me to come in and meet, where I began thinking fairly significantly about these three categories. So I have some thoughts with regard to recommendations, if you want to hear those initially, we can go into that, or you can ask questions of the three, but I'd like to work from, instead of left to right, let's go right to left, okay? So if we start with the education degree boxes over there, it's kind of my estimation, and just knowing a lot of your staff, the way I do, and the positions that are held by most of your leadership, most of those individuals, a lot of those individuals already have their doctorate degree. I can't, I really can't envision Rockwood hiring someone without that as their next superintendent schools. That's just my assessment. While it's somewhat limiting in terms of the candidate pool, not to the degree that I think we would lose folks of significance who genuinely would be considered strong candidate for our position. So it would be my recommendation in that particular heading, that we check off the fact that they do have their superintendent certificate. I'd like for them to be fully certified. I don't, I've gotten into a couple of locations now where we did search and they were kind of on the come, kind of, "Yeah, I'm sitting for the test," and then, at least in one situation, that didn't go so well. So, we had a candidate that we're kind of interested in, who didn't get their certification. Not a good place to be. So I'd like to just take that off the table, make sure they have their certificate, that they have their doctorate, instead of preferred, we'll just say required. Does that make sense to you? Okay? So, it's really the top box, superintendent certificate, and then that bottom one, we're gonna say doctorate required. Okay? I'm gonna go with nodding of heads is a good thing, unless I hear otherwise.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, experience. This is probably one we need to have some discussion about. If, almost inevitably, and for example, the three searches that I did previous this year, and most of the ones that I've done in preceding years, this would be an area where we would almost always check the box that says "central office experience required." Some of the smaller districts that I do will say preferred, but they, you know, there may be a high school principal at a large setting who might come in and has never been in central office, who might be their next superintendent, but in most of them, we're almost always saying "central office required." Occasionally, not very often, we have districts who are interested in hiring only someone who has had experience as a superintendent in the past. And that's probably a conversation for you to have. If there's a district in the area who's, could probably consider that as a prerequisite, it would be Rockwood, in my estimation. But know that if, in fact, we say that, then that is a significant limiting prerequisite. You would probably reduce your candidate pool fairly significantly, if we were to say that we only were gonna consider people who had previously served as a superintendent of schools. But you tell me. I'd like to hear some voice on that.
Personally, I feel that I, with the credibility that we have in the state, that we have somebody who has superintendency experience coming into us, rather than bringing someone forward that isn't, ready to move into, stepping into some big shoes.
Thank you. Also?
I would say it would be desired, heavily desired, but I mean, if the right candidate comes forward, I mean, I hate to not look at them, just because they haven't been a superintendent yet, but, again, heavily desired, but for me, I don't think it would be a requirement, if it's the right person.
Sure. For example, there are districts, a few, comparable in size and scope to Rockwood, you know, in North Kansas City, Springfield, Parkway, some others, who may have, let's use the title deputy superintendent, okay, for the lack of a better term, someone who, for years, or a number of years, has served as probably number two in charge in a larger district. If he or she has never been a superintendent of schools, and we indicate that they have to be, then we've obviously eliminated them, and I happen to have a person in mind who may fit that description, who may have some interest, but I don't know. Other thoughts?
I would still agree. I've only heard... Because I was thinking the same. Assume it can be...
Well, in the last five years, we have in our history an occasion where we hired a superintendent that had not had any experience, and in the end, that didn't work out very well. And that happened here in Rockwood, not very long ago. So there would be, if somebody was not prior superintendent experience, there would have to be some compensating qualifications that made that a viable choice. There would be a criticism of, quote-unquote, "This is not an entry-level position." So there would have to be something that we could look at and say, "Yes, but here's some qualifications that make this something that should still be viable." So if it's not superintendent experience, it would have to be something pretty convincing, a pretty good story, for why we would do that.
Couldn't agree more. And I think, as your facilitator, maybe if I were to take a position at this gesture in the process, maybe casting a little wider net initially helps give you then the latitude toward, as we narrow that candidate field down, to do just that net, in terms of making a case, if in fact, we have someone who maybe has never had the title, but certainly for the last five years has served as, you know, a deputy superintendent, a number two in a large, comprehensive, you know, urban, suburban kind of setting district, that may fit those qualifications that you're talking about. But again, that would just, kind of my thinking. I don't, this is your decision. Anybody else?
I think if you, with the central office experience required, that's all-inclusive, which means superintendents who are interested, fine, but those deputy superintendents or someone that has been in the shadows, who just hadn't had a chance, they could really shine and come through. I think, I agree with you, I think, in that process, then if you find the ones with superintendent's experience, fine. If you don't, then it allows you to look at people that don't have the title superintendent, but have basically been acting like one.
Maybe a reminder for the board, too, as we move through the process, you know, I talk, I use my I-voice here a lot, sorry. While I take credit for all of the placements, I have never hired a superintendent. Boards hire the superintendents, and as we work our way through the process, at every step where we are at a benchmark, making decisions about our pool, you know, if we start with 30, and we narrow to 10, and we narrow to five, you are making those decisions all along, the step, every step of the way. So, you know, I think we have that latitude, as a board, to, you know, look at all of the candidates, if in fact, someone can play their way in there that has not been a sitting superintendent of schools, then he or she has deserved that opportunity. You'll make that decision. If not, you also make that decision.
Do you narrow the search down to a certain number? Or do we look at all?
The first time, historically, what I like to do, Keith, is sometime within a week or two after our deadline for filing, have what I call the A-to-Z meeting, where we are in closed session, and I am giving you everything that I have learned, in significant detail, about every candidate, A through Z. If we've got 29, then we're gonna talk about all 29, I'm gonna tell you everything I know. It's a fairly sophisticated process of red light, green light, yellow light, and then you help me with, you know, whether or not we want to have some people play their way into that green light. But it really is, everything I've learned from a screening, a vetting, reference checking, you know, visiting with people who are on their board currently, or, you know, whatever that status is, you learn all of that that evening, and we decide at that point what our number is. I don't have a magic number in place, I really don't. I know what's manageable, depending on what the next steps in our process are, but that first decision, real, serious decision-making meeting will be with the eight of us, in deciding how many of that candidate field you want to move forward, and what that looks like in terms of the next step.
Do you have an estimation of how many you think might apply, from your experience in Fox and Ladue and wherever else you've been?
Again, depending on what we decide on some of this. If we, you know, if we were to say, and list on our posting, that you have had to have been a, you know, prior experience as a superintendent, then that number that you're asking for is a little smaller. But I would say somewhere in the neighborhood of, you know, 25 to 30.
If you have, if you have central office experience required, or if it's just superintendent experience?
If it's just central office required, that number is, that's the one I'm giving you, 25 to 30. If it's superintendent required, then that's probably gonna be lower than that, honestly.
Thanks, Brent.
What we're talking about right now is what, um, I think about the most. Because, you know, obviously we all want the best superintendent for our kids. Uh, and, and so what I do know is I want to give everyone the opportunity to apply and everyone, uh, the opportunity to go through the process. Because although I think the superintendent experience is some sort of superintendent experience is exceedingly important, uh, I, I don't want to rule people out who might be fantastic. So I think just sticking, I, I'm kind of between you two, right, and you two, and I don't know whoever was saying kind of the same thing, that I certainly would love to have someone who's been around the block in his one to five years' experience. But I also don't want to rule anybody out. So if that means that, kind of what you were telling Matt, that, you know, wider net to start with, I think I would prefer that.
So I think what I'm hearing, um, is that we would probably go with a statement similar to central office experience required at this point. What I hear you pushing me for is as we move through the process, uh, giving some preference and, and guidance to those folks who have had previous superintendent experience.
Brent, could, could we not then also attach to that superintendent experience preferred?
Absolutely.
I mean, I think.
We can make this say whatever we want. It's your, your posting, absolutely.
That this is something that we're really looking at and I think that's the thing that we're kind of saying.
Yeah, I, I agree with you. And it's your posting?
Rather than leaving that out completely.
Sure, sure. It would also say to the candidates unequivocally, who may not have been a superintendent of schools, just how confident they are in their ability to put themselves and cast themselves into that light and, and go ahead and put their hat in the, in the ring.
Type or something.
Right. A lot of times that's left to my, you know, conversations with them and screening with them. But I, on your behalf, I'm in no trouble with us saying, adding, you know, a little box here that says superintendent experience preferred. I like it. I like the phrase.
Knock out some people?
Potentially, if, if you, let's, let's, let's just role play. You and I are area superintendents in the Melville School District, have never been a superintendent of schools before. Just hypothetical. I, I used to know somebody who had that role. Um, and I saw this posting that said, central office required. Okay, I got that. The superintendent experience preferred. Well, I'm, I'm responsible for 6,000 kids and a budget of 50,000 and that's, that's as big as many districts or most districts in the state of Missouri. I, I think I can do this.
Great. Open spoke.
You could go either way. It's, understand that our attitude is superintendency preferred. But, but if you don't post that, then, then still, when you're screening, know that that's the attitude of the board. Now, you might cast a little bit wider net by not making that such a strong statement, but, but know that if you bring us somebody who's not currently a superintendent, we're going to want to know what, what, what do they have that compensates for that. That's right.
Do they play their way into your mix?
And I just think of a, of a, and I'm just throwing this out there. I think of a principal who has run a, a, a building and a feeder schools in a smaller town, but who in essence ran that district because that's what the district was, right? So I just, I'm not saying that's the person we choose, but I'm just saying that there is something to be said about somebody who ha- is able to really bring people together on all the levels. Because the superintendent's job is someone who brings every level together. So I think putting that preferred makes, I would feel comfortable with that. So whoever had that idea, that was great.
Is it ever happened?
Pardon that?
Or would?
Yes. Just, just worked with a, one of the finalists who had that exact body of work in terms of previous experience. Had done so, quite honestly, on the recommendation of myself, um, who I'd had in a previous search, had been in a smaller district, um, went to a much larger district, um, assumed the title of deputy superintendent, has been working on, you know, $50 million bond ref- issue referendums and, and things that were not going to be a part of his scope of work in the, of his previous employ.
Had superintendent prior to that.
That's right.
So he'd be bringing that to the table.
That's right. That's a, that's an additional set of skillset that, you know, whether there's three zeros, commas, or, you know, behind the zero, or, or six.
We're saying is.
Right, exactly, exactly. Okay, so we're, I'm, what I heard there in Janet, for those of you keeping score, um, at home, central office experience required and superintendent experience preferred. Okay? Okay, salary range, never an issue for any of the boards I've ever worked with. That's why I always work right to left. Um, I also had, uh, thanks to Janet's help, uh, one, one document there that lists for you, um, I think it's, I think it, I believe it's 1718 data for superintendents of schools in, in the metro region here, Jefferson County, St. Louis County, St. Charles County. Um, just to give you a, a reference, um, in terms of the current landscape of, of sitting, sitting superintendent salaries. Now, some of that has changed, in fact, changed significantly with some of the retirements at the end of last year and the ones that I just filled, you know, this, this, uh, previous fall. Um, but does give you a flavor. Again, the boxes that you see there on the left, um, you know currently where you are in terms of your remuneration for your current superintendent of schools. Um, we obviously can create our own salary range. Um, the thing I like about a range is it does give both you, the board, as representatives for your stakeholders, some guidelines, some, some, you know, kind of previously agreed to declaration of where you'd like to work within. And it also gives candidates, um, a very clear sense of, um, whether or not this is a position that they're going to be willing to consider based on just the, the salary piece alone. And, and a lot of times, especially if we're looking from folks outside the area who may be making decisions about selling their home and picking up and moving and, you know, bringing family, um, salary becomes a, a big determiner in terms of that. Um, anybody want to be brave and, and, and begin our conversation in terms of throwing out, uh, maybe a bottom number and top number kind of thing there in terms of?
I'll jump out there for a minute.
Great, Matt, way to go.
I've done, I've done a lot of hiring in my past. Um, make that range fairly wide and, and make a statement of, of course, we're going to keep within the boundaries of the district's history for superintendents, the superintenances of others in our area and the quality of the manpower, the, the pool of candidates that we expect to get. Um, that doesn't mean the sky's the limit and that doesn't mean we're looking for a basement bargain either. Um, throwing out a specific number is, is something I think that, that may not be appropriate, but anybody certainly wanting to be a superintendent in Rockwood would look up what the current superintendent is making.
Right.
Um, they're, they're, they're not going to miss that trick. And if, if they do miss that trick, we might want to keep looking.
Not interested.
Yeah, so, so as far as a, a specific number, I'd be hesitant to do that. I would be, I would say it would be in keeping with our district history, the qualifications of the candidates and what's required in a competitive market within the St. Louis region. And they'll, they will know what that means.
So, so you're arguing for some kind of narrative phrase versus including any dollar amounts?
Well, just to be as blunt as I can, rather than putting out to the public that we're going to spend exactly this much money on a superintendent. It depends on who we find and what their qualifications are. And, and certainly anybody worth their salt can look up and know what that range is going to be. And as you talk to people, you know, you could pass that along to them, that, that, that they're not looking for a, a basement bargain. They're, they're, they're looking for the best choice for superintendent and the sky's not the limit either. So, so based upon where we are now and, they know what
Now, what's typical is, is a range. Um, but we almost always have this conversation also about, you know, language that might say commensurate with experience or, you know, that's fairly common language in the HR world. Um, but no, the answer is typically a range is listed somewhere as both a guidepost and a.
Who's people if you don't put a range, your experience?
I, I don't know. My experience is almost always we have a range. Uh, so I don't know. I, I, potentially, I suppose. Um, I, I think realistically, people are not going to look at Rockwood and go, oh, they're trying to lowball me. Or we're trying to, you know, reset our schedule to balance our budget. We're not going to do that on the back of the superintendent's salary. Um, you know, at the same time, um, I, I think where we would help some of the candidates are folks who might be making money commensurate to current levels and, and whether or not it, the, the, the risk of applying and making is worth their time, interest, energy, et cetera. Uh, I think more about those candidates than I do, you know, the aspiring or first time seeker kind of positions, or excuse me, candidates. Other thoughts? Jamie, you've been awfully quiet. Put you on the spot.
Uh, I don't know. I think it's tough. I think looking at the numbers, you know, you, it, it's hard to narrow it in my mind to a $15,000 increment because of what we're putting under experience. Um, I mean, I agree with what Matt's saying, but I understand that I think a label to this would make sense. So putting something down makes sense. It's just, I don't think we necessarily want to overshoot where we want to go in this listing.
Right.
I don't know how you typically do this. I mean, how do you typically frame it around the current salary of the district that you're dealing with?
We're just usually take one of two positions. Um, they see this, especially if, for example, they've had someone, let's, let's take, um, our neighbor's Valley Park. Dr. Canes had been there 15 years, three years as an assistant, 12 as a superintendent of schools and, and was clearly making a, a dollar amount toward the end of his career that, um, probably was not commensurate with what they would, wanted to see a new superintendent come in. Um, because historically, that's a function of years in the seat, years in the position. Um, Dr. Canos has been here, you know, five, you know, he making money now that he was not making five years ago. Um, again, I think this as much as anything, if we do, how do we do it? We do it just like we're doing right now. We, we wrestle through, um, what, what you all think makes sense for your system. Their, their posting was like 175 to 205 or something like that. Actually, let me not try to remember that because I'm not, I'm getting older and I forget all the time. I've got some of those with me, I believe.
Went down.
Absolutely. From, from.
Almost a 240.
From where, yeah. Dr. Canes was, yes.
Brent did the same.
Brent would did the same. Ladue did the same, a little, not quite to the degree. They were pretty adamant that they wanted it to be a, a number that would be attractive to, uh, sitting superintendents in recognizable, kind of high-profile districts throughout the country. And when we, and we almost used those words when we had this conversation.
They from part.
Most of the positions that, that, since, since you are the big dog in the metro area, most, most everybody that would be looking at this position is going to be looking at coming on, accepting more responsibility, more expectations, more demands on the position and expect to make more money to do that. You know, um, I just looked at Fox, they posted 175 to 210 in a district half the size of yours.
Smaller districts on here. I mean, you brought up Clayton, for example, and it's just a, it's a great example. That person would be going from 2,500 to 20,000 students.
I, I think you kind of have to have a, a basement and you, then you have to have something that at the top end looks to make it attractive to folks that you're trying to recruit.
Give us, uh, give us an opinion on some sort of a range.
Right. I, in my, in my head, as I was, you know, getting no sleep last night, was, you know, thinking that likely, um, that your bottom was going to be, you know, the bottom interview was going to be around 200,000 or something in that neighborhood and that, that, you know, how far you want to extend that is entirely up to you. Um, you know, these, these increments here that you see on those are just suggestions. You know, you can do whatever you want. You can, 2, 235, you know. Minimum of, and then you, you could, you could do something like that.
That doesn't hold us to that upper range.
Well, and, and to be clear, this is a, this is intended to be a, a guidepost. It's, it, you're not married to your posting. Let's say you went 200, 235 and somebody from Baltimore comes in and is making 225 and they, they're happy, they used to have family here and they'd like to be back in Missouri and they want to come over, but they're already making 200, you know, 30,000 and they're not likely to move, pick up their family and move and relocate in Rockwood and, and do that all for, you know, a $3,000 or $4,000 increase. It's not likely to happen. But you really like this individual and you'd like to pay them something. You know, there, obviously there are districts who've exceeded, you know, and, and made exceptions to the, to the posting.
Throw out a number as a start, 200 to 240,000.
Okay, thank you.
And go from there.
I'd agree with that, Keith.
What?
I would agree with that.
Disagree. I don't think we should pay an incoming superintendent. I don't care how many years' experience, more than Dr. Canos makes. Huh? Because I don't think anybody coming in brand new deserves it. I mean.
It's in the district.
Yeah, prove yourself and then we'll bump your salary up. That's just me personally. I don't think you should, I personally don't think you should bring somebody in that hasn't been here for five years and say, well, we're going to pay you more than the existing superintendent. That's just.
I would agree with that. Makes sense. I just. You know, you look at, you look at the, the bulk of his work that he's done and it's, you know, countless hours and to say that we're going to give someone, I mean, I agree.
It's, it's not very common. If, if, I don't even know if I could come up with an example of, of where a district has, you know, brought someone in as a successor and, and immediately paid them more. I mean, there, there would have to be some extenuating circumstances, I believe, behind a situation like that. And I think, again, as Matt indicated about people who are going to be out there looking at the, you know, they're, they're doing their due diligence, they're looking at the number, they're, they would also anticipate not making more than, than what Dr. Canos is going out at, at that number. They're just not going to.
I don't think you can, in a district our size, you can pay less than 200,000. You could pay somebody 170, but would you want that person?
Oh, I, maybe you could, but the expectations of this position are tantamount to, you know, if not number one in the metro region, certainly very close to that.
It is number one.
Thank you, Dr. Kinder.
You're welcome.
And, and, and so again, I, I think, yeah, you, that's, that my 200 was a minimum and I think, you know, up to you to think. But, but again, this is exactly how we, we get to these conversations about where, where, you know, where boards decide. Um, and, and your point about not wanting to pay, I, it's right on. I think that's how most boards would, would look at that. I think it's clear, or fair to also remind boards that, um, and I usually counsel boards, um, to, to stay at a, a little bit lower end initially and, and not just in terms of salary, but also thinking about benefits and some other kinds of things that go with the, the initial contract. And, and then once that body of work begins to accumulate in the ways that both the board and the community and the superintendent are comfortable with, and i.e. and the community and the superintendent are comfortable with, and i.e., successful performance reviews each, every year, then those kinds of things become part of the conversation on the table, but not initially.
Remember, Keith, that...
That's right. These are a year old. That's right. We don't, we haven't collected, Ed Plus hasn't generated the 18, 19. Historically, that's been part of other contracts, but that's down the road. I just wanted you to be reminded in terms of thinking about how boards typically think about the progressive compensation after years of performance reviews.
Whatever number we're going to put down, we're going to list it as an anticipated salary range, not an absolute.
Absolutely.
We're not setting iron cast limits that we can't exceed, or one way or the other. So then you come down to what message you're sending. The numbers I wrote down were a little, slightly different. I wrote down 225 to 250.
That's exactly what I had.
The lower end of that was because, five years ago, when we hired a superintendent, we were slightly above 225, and I wouldn't want to send the message that we're looking to balance the budget on the superintendent's salary, so we're not looking to lower that a lot. And on the upper end of that, 250 would be not very far from where our current superintendent is, so we're also not looking to better our game there. There's nothing, there's nothing in the current situation that makes us go, man, we got to do better than that. So if you're not setting a hardcore limit, then let's send a message with this, and that's where I came up with 225 to 250, because I think both numbers kind of eliminate any kind of mind-wandering of, well, what's the board trying to do this for? Those are numbers you can kind of defend.
I like, and I thought I heard some agreeance and concurrence with when he brought that forward.
That's what I was thinking, too, and I was also curious what our range was the last time this was posted, for the very reason you just said. I didn't, I wouldn't want it to look like we were trying to go back and...
I don't remember setting a range last time. We certainly, we certainly kind of knew about where we were going to end up, but we didn't...
I thought, I thought we...
Maybe we did.
I don't know. Well, I was thinking 225 is the low end, and so to 250 makes sense.
The only thing I would add to that is if someone had mentioned, who it was, saying 225 minimum, and then not putting that higher range to kind of go along with that, but if you guys are good...
We're not guaranteeing a minimum or a maximum, we're just saying we're anticipating it's in this range.
I like that word, anticipated.
About 220 to 250.
About 219 to 219, 999. Sold!
Yeah, when you're getting into this kind of a range, I mean, again, you don't want to send to the public the wrong kind of messages either. This is, this is a high salary, higher than most people that live in our district. And so, let's set a range that's commensurate with what other superintendents have required to do, and don't get down to too fine a number, because it looks like you're starting to get specific, or maybe you're picking out a specific person. That we understand to get a person in this qualifications to do this job, you're going to have to pay in the range that those are going for. And we believe that range, anticipate that range to be somewhere in here. And if anybody asks you, why'd you pick those numbers, you, there's a story to tell. There's something you can say, this is why we did it.
That's a really good description, I think, of the process that you have to set.
I agree with that, but then I think you're too narrow. Go 220. 250. I don't care.
It's a minor difference.
Strong opposition to the 220, 225 to 250 range. Just to push the agenda a little bit here, okay? Okay? Thank you, Laura Lee. So Janet, I heard, I heard 220 to 250. Can we live with 220 to 250? Okay? Over there?
I'm still with the 225.
You want to, you want to leave it at 225?
Anybody opposed to 220? So, okay, raise your hand if you want 225. Raise your hand. 225 doesn't matter. 225, 250.
25 to 250, Janet, is what I heard. 225 to 250. The next one should not be as lengthy in terms of conversation. Multiple-year contract. Last decision we need to make as far as this form and the posting. I think your reputation is, yeah.
First three.
First of all, yes, and three is what, you know, I would be recommending to you, and I think is clear with your history, unless anybody has an opposition to that.
Was that done previously?
It's always been, yeah.
Yeah. Okay? So yes and three. And that really concludes the work in terms of the form and the posting, and Janet and I will double-check our numbers here before we go home tonight, and make sure that that becomes a part of the posting that goes live tomorrow for your next superintendent of schools, okay? So now you're in it. No lame duck jokes about Dr. Canos or anything, but you're, but you're moving forward, okay?
While the recording's going on.
Exactly right. Oh, I keep forgetting about that. Okay, so let's go back to my agenda there for just a second. In addition to the posting, there's a, historically, and you paid for this as part of your contractual agreement that you just approved earlier tonight, a little, I refer to it as a brochure, it's really just a one-page kind of Rockwood at-a-glance. Kathy, I'm sure, has multitude of narratives that are, and generates these kinds of artifacts all the time for your constituency, but this would be one that we would have for potential candidates to review, see it online, have in their hand, carry around with them. I'll ask Kathy and Janet to work with Sherry, we'll pull some things together, we'll send out that, and we can have that ready to go probably by the following week. The art people, the office do all that for you, and we'll have those next time we meet and bring those back to you. So with your permission, we'll just move forward with that as a go. And I don't want to spend a lot of time here, because I know this was kind of an emergency work session for you, but take a look at number four there, and just, let's start to begin to set the conversation maybe in terms of some of the community engagement, some of the pieces of the process that we can or cannot use going forward. And I, I did look at the RFP, I did look at and read through some of the timeline. You know, now that we've, you know, kick-started our timing and looking at this, I, you know, I'm very interested in your thoughts with regard to focus groups. I have some suggestions of things that I have done in the past that have, you know, been successful for us in terms of collecting data points and generating that profile that I talked about earlier. But there may be some other, you know, hybrid kinds of things that you have in mind that you'd like, that are a particular group that we have to visit with or have a sit-down with. I tend to think of myself as kind of old-school, low-tech, and I like to sit in a room with other folks when they're talking to me about the focus, so that I can hear that, and I can process that, and I can write it down, and I can show them what I've written down, and they know that they've been heard, and those kinds of experiences. And I usually refer to those as focus groups, and I usually just kind of, whatever number that you feel like we need to, you know, if it's Dr. Canos's cabinet, if it's the administrative team, if it's teachers, and we just throw open the door to a gymnasium and invite all the teachers in, and we invite our support staff in, if we invite parents in, we have a community night next, for example, on the 26th, I'm going to be at Fox in the Brickman Auditorium, we're just going to throw the door open. If you want to talk about the superintendent's schools, come meet with Dr. Underwood, here's what we're going to do. And we have a scribe or two, and we get down to everything that anybody wants to talk to us about. We don't have to make those decisions tonight, but I want you to be thinking about who are some of the folks that we need to make sure that we include in that process. We usually use it on some sort of online survey that, and I would think in Rockwood, your community is very familiar and comfortable with those kinds of things. Again, we can use Kathy's expertise, we can use some of the models that we have that we generate and that you all, again, are paying for. We've had good experience with collecting a lot of important data that, for example, you know, in Ladue, we generated, you know, four or 500 responses, and that was a couple hundred more than they'd had on any survey that they ever generated, so they were very happy to have that back. When we were in Hillsboro, Hillsborough a couple of years ago, I'm sorry, not Hillsborough, when we were in Northwest a couple of years ago, we had over 2,300 people fill the search out, or fill the survey out. I would imagine that number would be big here. People are accustomed to you asking for their input and they providing that. So you've got focus groups, you've got open-mic night kinds of things, where I come out and just visit with people, we've got online surveys. There are other thoughts that you've had as you thought about engaging your community?
Be interested in having a focus group of at least the four high schools, maybe even down through the junior high, or at least an online survey specifically for them.
So, talking about feeder patterns and having, you know, a Marquette High School focus or focus group versus a Rockwood, or versus Lafayette, versus a Summit, versus Eureka, is that what you're saying?
Do that, or just put all four in together?
Yeah.
For the students to do.
Oh, for students, okay. You were just talking about students, okay.
You could ask, what quadrant are you a part of?
Sure.
I mean, that'll help.
Break it down for your terms of the demographic.
I don't know if that survey needs to be different, but it might give you interesting data, if you get something different.
We could organize the survey that way. Dr. Canos, do you have a student advisory committee that you use?
I have a student advisory at every high school, at all four high schools.
Yeah, so we, there's a built-in group we can plug into right away. And I really like, well, I really like visiting with the kids, I love to listen to their thoughts, but I think you will really enjoy hearing their thoughts. Too often, we tend to leave the student voice out in this process.
I was going to say, I meant about it.
Okay?
The principals usually have their own advisory groups, too, so that would...
Sure.
...whiten that pool even a little bit more, if you wanted to group in more.
Beyond advisory groups. Nothing wrong with advisory groups, bud. How many, how many kids, I know, but I'm saying, how many kids are on your advisory group at each high school? Centerless, right, so...
So I mean, if you even to the principals, too, that's at least verbal, but then you could do a written survey like you suggested, and tap into all the kids who ever wanted to.
I think even, this is a time issue, but even if you could do a focus group at each high school, because to capture the voice of some of the kids that aren't in a leadership position, that, to tell us what they want as superintendent, you know, we talk about some of the things, the social-emotional learning piece, that we're all champions, you need to tap into, to that population of students as well, and have that conversation.
If I could just interject, just keep this in mind, in our thought exchange survey that we just did, we had an overwhelming number of students that did engage through a survey, and...
Good.
I am proud of the connection I've had with kids, and I think they would engage electronically. I really do.
Okay, awesome.
If we put it out there in the right way, I think kids would engage in survey.
We do it similarly to that? Could it be set up similarly to the thought exchange, where...
Yeah, it just seemed to be such a successful tool, especially with that demographic, so it might be a great way to just piggyback onto that, keep it going.
And I also noticed, I'm sure it's a slight, that you didn't have a focus group for grandparents?
I like to consider the grandparents as part of the community, but...
Okay.
Having just become a grandparent, you're right, I will be attending my first grandparents' day tomorrow at Montessori, so, you know, kind of nervous.
A couple of groups that seem like we need to make sure we engage directly, and of course, one would be all the people who are a direct report to the superintendent. And I would like to see you lead a group with them in the room and say, what makes a great boss? What do you wish that outgoing guy who had done differently? Just to elicit, and probably the most important part of that is, after the conversation, if you want to say anything to me in private, or send me something in private, please do that, because I think you'll get more direct, honest feedback through that than somebody having to raise their hand, saying, you know, man, that bowtie you wore was really awful, or whatever that might be. Another group...
It's been my experience that, not to interrupt Matt, but that's exactly how I would go about doing it, and I like having that group that you just described, because, you know, obviously they have a lot of skin in the game in terms of, you know, this becomes their immediate supervisor, someone who's going to, you know, help continue to move the district and the flock forward into that northeast, you know, motion. And it's been my experience that there are very few building-level administrators, central office administrators, who are not willing to put their voice in the room.
But then, you know, two more groups.
But also ask them.
One would be the administrative staff who are not necessarily a direct report, high school principals, people like that. And again, there's not such a large group of those that you couldn't be manageable, but again, the same kind of conversation of, boy, if you could rewrite the district, what would you do? You know, here's our chance, what would you do? And the last one would be the certificated staff, and, you know, with numbers of teachers are probably unmanageable for, you know, 1,700 of them or so in Rockwood, so you probably can't get all of them here, but you could get a leadership representation of them. And after you get past all the staff at the various levels, at least two or three opportunities for anybody in the public who wants to come and talk. And if you want the board members to be there or not be there, I don't know what the best way to get that feedback is, I'm sure the board, let me speak for everybody for a minute, the board would be more than happy to be there in whatever role, either fielding questions or just listening or being seen.
Typically, if we're going to have just a kind of all-call community night, and in this district, we probably need to have more than one. It's usually structured such that the board members are there initially, maybe for introductory kinds of things, and then, and probably then are excused, so that your presence doesn't inhibit in any way the exchange of ideas and thoughts. Sometimes, community aren't as open to say something that they may want to say with regard to that, but it's also been done and facilitated where, you know, people stayed through it. That's up to you. I would recommend that you, if you're there, you're there to show support for the process, and then you leave.
Do you typically engage the teachers for their input? Because I'd say we're in a unique situation here, where we have a very visible superintendent who is so well-known, you know, even through all the kids, that, I mean, I know I hear chatter more so than previous times about this position opening among them, so to make sure they're heard.
Usually, we just, you know, again, if we need multiple opportunities, in Limburg, let's say, for example, when we did the search last year, we opened the cafeteria, we had two separate times, because, you know, we always end up, you have the coaching and all the staff folks who are helping with clubs and stuff that you might miss if you do right after school, so we'd do it in early morning or something, and then we'd do it after school, open the door, invite folks in. I always try to caution, unless there's a real concern, those numbers are never what you anticipate they're going to be in terms of people actually showing up.
That's why I wondered if an in-person...
But the surveys, they always take advantage of.
I was going to say, can you do both of them?
Absolutely, absolutely. Right, right, right. And then there will be folks who want both.
Right.
Is there, is there a limit on how many of these you'll do through the contract, or can...
The cardiologist does have a number in mind, but no, I mean, typically...
Basically, talk to about 100,000 people in a month.
Right, this is a big place, so, yeah, I'll try to, just the economy of scale help, you know, by maybe doing the feeder patterns or the...
And the geographic diversity of the district, if you did one in Fenton and one up near Lafayette, you would catch most of the district to be able to do that, but if you did two of them and they're both at Marquette and Lafayette, there would be a feeling of, you didn't...
Right, and I'll let Kathy and folks help me with that. You guys know the district better than I do, and so they'll tell me what we feel like we need to do. As long as you guys are, I really wanted to make sure that you kind of heard, any other thoughts about that? I do like the exit interview, although I hesitated calling it an exit interview, because you are paying this man through June 30. But I like having a time where I can sit with the outgoing superintendent and pick his or her brain in terms of, you know, what's trending right now in the district in terms of issues that are surfacing, what are the things that you anticipate that your successor having to deal with in his or her first year? You know, we were just talking about, it's been three years now since I was here, helping facilitate with the teacher negotiations, and so that's on the horizon again, and those kinds of things, that only a superintendent can kind of uniquely qualify and characterize for meets, that I can pass along in terms of listen force. And as we go through the process, if you feel like there's some other things that we need to do, that we can create, not the least of which, and I want you to start thinking about some of this, too, is, you know, again, it's one thing to have that profile, that profile phase and ask for voice and have people talk to us, it's entirely something else in terms of actively engaging them. Once we're down to like a semifinal number of candidates, are you going to have a feedback committee that's a listening interviewing group that's active with some of that, or do you want to include them in that? Do you not? We don't have to decide that tonight, but I do want you to start getting some thoughts of that, because it'll get here before we know it. I mean, it goes faster than you'll imagine.
With the deadline for the 20th, our board meeting's the 20th, will you make a presentation that night? Or you can't?
In terms of the, I'm sorry, the 20th, you're talking about the deadline for application to 20?
Application, yes.
Can I make a presentation? Sure. In terms of just bringing an update and stuff? Yeah. Historically, what I like to do with boards at regular scheduled meetings and/or whenever you think it's appropriate, is to kind of, again, to add some of that transparency, to add to that piece of, you know, just keeping people apprised of where we are in the process. I come and I am usually a part of, you know, five-minute update, 10-minute update at regular meetings. I usually do Friday communiques to you all via Janet, so that we don't trigger any of those sunshine issues that we need to be conscious of, so that you know in between meetings what I'm doing, the activities that are search-related that are ongoing. I try to give you like a Friday update. But, yeah, regular kind of updates for the, for the community or can be a part... But yeah, regular kinda updates for the, for the community are, can be a part of that. We'll also probably use Kathy's office to, you know, I'm sure there are regular communications that are ongoing that we can plug into as well.
After the 20th, what's the next big thing that you do with us?
Probably that A to Z meeting that we talked about in closed session.
Would that be separate from the board meeting?
Yes.
That first week of January after the...
Probably somewhere right beginning of January.
Third, fourth, or fifth?
Somewhere in there.
As I think you've heard from this board, we just really value input of everyone, and we just wanna make sure nobody's voice is not heard. And like I said, I'm sure you hear that from other boards, but this board is...
Not always.
Very, very committed, am I, I'm not speaking out of turn for everyone, right? We're just completely committed to making sure everybody who has anything to say, that they're being heard. And the students has...
And we will use that information, so it's just now to exercise, and hey, we're hearing you. It's like, that information will be utilized in the process.
No question, I mean, I, and I, you know, I, I will tell you, and, and you'll see, again, I lay out the, you know, all my little piles of highlighted materials, where I'm using that as direction for me, again, on your behalf in screening, and, you know, does this person fit some of our profile? Or, you know, he, he or she may have a great body of work, but that doesn't look like a fit for Rockwood, not based on where we are at current time and what we're hearing from our, from our stakeholders, so... No, it absolutely becomes North Star for us, yeah.
Who else on your team from the St. Louis area?
No.
Okay, how many on your team? Yes, you?
I have a, there are probably three or four other consultants that I communicate with regularly, two of which are a part of our MSBA group, and then a couple that are with the national firms that I talk with. Contrary to popular belief, we, we do communicate with those groups, even though...
Two of your in-school boards know them?
Who, like Paul James? Yeah, it's likely you would know some of those folks, yes. Anything else from the board, as far as, I'm not trying to extend the meeting, Laura Lee's gotta get done already.
I do, but that's not the reason why we should leave. I would really encourage you to work with Janet, and then Janet, try and get those dates really solidified sooner rather than later, because you're already talking about the beginning of January, and what the end... We have some conflicts, I know, with people being on vacation, and kids playing sports, and... So, at least try and get something started on that, working on...
Two dates that I know I cannot be at are the 28th and 26th of January.
Yeah, so that's what I'm saying, why don't we maybe Janet, try and get that figured out?
Send Janet the dates we can't be there?
Mm-hmm.
If you know, that'd be wise.
Just want, that we can get that as early as possible on our calendar.
Whatever information you wanna send my way.
Right, Janet, I mean, she's been great, we've already had four phone calls.
Between the two of you, and at least start to get something you need to call me, or whatever, let's start to get that...
And the first meeting being, we have something kind of out there for next Wednesday, is that a meeting that, you know, that we all cannot be at? Well, do we need that meeting, is what I'm saying?
That's what I'm asking with him, Brent, what do you think? Do we need something next Wednesday? That was something we had on there to, for search for presentations.
Was, and, and that was a part of your original scheduling, but we kinda jump-started that, and I think this meeting has taken the place of that meeting.
Take it off.
I'm gonna cancel that, okay.
You've done such a wonderful job.
Because Janet did such a good job of coordinating and getting you all here.
Janet's always that way, I'm not sure you're always that way, Brent.
No, I will just follow her lead, like any smart former superintendent schools. All right, don't, don't fold up your stuff just yet. One piece of homework, as any good instructor would have, a learning opportunity for you.
We didn't sign up for homework.
Yeah, I know, sorry. I have both a hard copy, and Janet has an electronic copy of the very first little focus group I'd like to conduct, and that's with the seven of you. I'd like for you to take about 20 minutes or so and fill out a little focus group survey that is an important first step for us. It, it gives me and you a first look at the groupthink of the seven of you. And I, I mean, I know you've had some conversations, and you go to regular meetings, and you may have talked to each other individually, but all seven of you giving us your thoughts about, what are some of the strengths of the district right now? What are some of the challenges that were presented here in Rockwood currently? What, what are some of the things you'd like to see our superintendent tackle in his or her first year? What are some of the priorities, competencies, characteristics that you believe we need to prioritize as we look for our next superintendent? All that is in here, okay? So I'll give, I'll have one hard copy for each of you, and if you prefer to fill it out electronically, Janet has it, we can send it to you as well. As soon as we can get those back...
We all shaking our heads yes electronically?
Electronic, yeah. Oh, really? No, 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 old Brent Underwoods, they have to have the paper copy to highlight? Oh, that's great.
You give us a deadline too?
Yes, we can, yes, we can, why don't we do that right now?
Several reminders.
How many points you lose if you're late?
Like end of next week, or middle of next week?
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, we're, if, if you could get this, yeah, I would think if we get this, like, maybe, yeah, the end of next week, we get that off to Sherry, she can do the compilation, we'll get it back, and then we could have, that would help me drive in talking with her about the next time we meet, 'cause I'd also like to then have some conversation with you around the results of that compilation.
Could sit in there? About 20 minutes?
It's not that long, yeah, I'd say 20, 25 minutes. I did, you know, you're bumping up against Thanksgiving, so I didn't really wanna have you...
Be overachievers and get that done early.
Right, Janet, you, you shoot them a date, and we'll, we'll live with that, okay?
I'll go with the first day.
'Cause she's gonna send it to you electronically, so she'll pick the date, and you'll behave and get that in.
By Tuesday preferred, but we'd accept a range of Wednesday to Friday.
That's what it'll end up being.
You can see, you can see the one that's gonna be late, can't you?
Of course, we all, we all have experience too, though.
He was the first one here tonight, I know.
He lives the closest.
I think he was trying to avoid traffic.
All right, are we good? Are you?
I'm good, this is, this is incredibly helpful, you all have done some really good work in a short amount of time, and in a very short turnaround, so thank you very much. I think that will help us immensely going forward, and, you know, getting, getting that little jumpstart on, on the, our window of opportunity here, grabbing folks who will be looking. A lot of conversations happen around Thanksgiving tables and, and winter break kinds of things about, gee, is this a position I should consider? You know, that's a, that's a, usually a family decision too, so I think this'll help us get going real quickly. And, and again, I, I can't thank you enough for the opportunity, and promise you that we will see every personnel opportunity as a chance to improve, and that's never a reflection on the outgoing folks, it's always a, it's just a philosophical approach that we wanna always try to get better, and that's our goal. So I'll be a part of helping you do that, okay? I'm good, you guys, unless you have anything else? Yeah, thank you.
Excellent, we all good? Okay, during the meeting.
Thank you very much.